of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will call our meeting to order and we have the excitement annually to be able to get an update from the communications department and we'll start with our communications director, Kevin Cook.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, City Manager, staff, and our esteemed audience. Thank you for this opportunity. Initially, I was going to share with you how did we get here? And that in itself is its own presentation. So I just have one slide on that and then I was just, I just want to share before we even get into the meat and potatoes of this. I had no idea we did as much work as we did in 2020.
Made you tired.
Until you start compiling everything and putting it together, then you go, oh, wow. So I think you should be impressed. I know I was. So I'm going to just give you a quick, really very brief slide and talk a little bit about how we got here. I am blessed. I was chosen in 2000 as the first PIO for the city of Lakeland. I was at what was then the Lakeland Center during the heyday. We were doing concerts and live music. And at the time, we had City Manager Gene Strickland, who was on his way out. He was retiring. We had Roger Har coming in. Roger Har was, if you know Roger, he's not the most gregarious person. So Gene Strickland said, hey, I think you need to get a PIO. And here he is. So I came over in 2000 as the PIO. And with that, we really weren't doing anything. There was no formalized communications whatsoever. There's an occasional news story, but there was, there was no real intent or strategy or anything of that nature. So in 2001, we started our first website and our first Citizens Academy. I'm proud to say, world, we just finished up our 22nd Citizens Academy. Even with COVID, we came back and we made it happen and we graduated our 22nd class with a degree in governmentology, creating ambassadors for the city of Lakeland. And in 2004, we actually created the centralized communications department when we took the PIO and the two marketing individuals, which at the time was Mimi Fernandez at Lakeland Electric and Robin Tillot, who is now at the Police Department. And we came together as a centralized communications department. And in 2005, the man behind the glass, Michael Mustard, we hired him and we started LGN. So let me tell you what we did before that.
What is LGN?
Lakeland Government Network. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before that, we opened up that window and we used a camcorder and recorded the City Commission meeting, just straight shot. We would record that on a VHS cassette and run it to Auburndale because that's where Tom Warner Cable was. That was their video head. We'd run it to them and then they would replay the meeting at 6:00 PM that Monday. And that was the extent of your Lakeland Government Network and we have what we have today. And then in 2009, we started delving into social media because a good friend of mine named Josh Hallett, who now oversees social media for Publix, he contacted me and said, hey, you really need to get on this thing called Facebook with the city of Lakeland. And he encouraged me to do so and I'm glad we did. One thing you're not going to hear me really talk about because this again is its own presentation, but I just want to let you guys know, we are the face and we do media relations for the city of Lakeland. I have a great relationship and I know there's no I N team, so I really need to concentrate. We have a very awesome team, but many of the reporters, the beat reporters that cover the city of Lakeland, I've known for decades. I'm not talking years, I'm talking decades. I've known Ken Suarez for over 30 years. I had the opportunity when I lived in Tampa, I worked for PR firms and I knew Ken then back when he was a host on 47. You guys remember that? So I'm just going to share a couple of media channels with you. We face to face, Citizens Academy, ribbon cutting, celebrations, memorials, speaking engagements, things of that nature, print, video and our video live broadcast campaigns, series, things of that nature. We have our own video series and then digital media, which is our website, our social media, and then of course, our podcasting. So you often see the end product from communications, so I just want to introduce the team to you. We have a very small, tight knit group of superstars. This particular, I love this because when COVID first started, we were, we were quarantined. And I wanted to continue to put out products, so I contacted the team and I said, everybody go shoot something with your camera on what you're doing and what people can do while they're quarantined. We put it all together, we edited it and we made a video. So, and these are just screenshots from that particular video. So your communications team is led by me, the communications director, Christina Camp, who's our administrative assistant, and Girl Friday, she also has her own video series, Her Hands On, Mike Mustard, who's our producer, and you see him there on my couch acting for a spot that we did for 911. Patrick Patterson, our creative services manager, Jamin Smith, our graphic designer, and Nate Graham, I love this picture, he's holding a Dixie cup, wearing a Dixie cup shirt. And then we have Liz Holliday, our webmaster, in one of her mini mud runs. So here's where we're going to get into our outputs. So in 2020, our media output for web, we developed numerous webpages and microsites, especially dedicated to COVID. We had 170 news blog posts. We created 489 new webpages. That's new webpages. We have over 25,000 webpages on the city's website. For social media, we had over 1,000 posts on Facebook, 1,700 posts on Twitter, and 678 posts on Instagram. That does not include our Instagram stories, which I want to talk about either. And graphic design, our team of two produced 177 projects. Video, we did 154 live productions and we did 156 edited videos. And if you know anything about video, for every one minute of finished product, you have about an hour of editing. We've got a lot of hours in editing.
It's awesome.
So here's our website. As you can see, we're promoting our lift Lakeland right now. So we've come a long ways since our first website. Our first website, as I shared with you, was in 2001. We updated it in 2004. We updated it again in 2011 and then what you see now, the iteration, was 2011. We have a giant search box. I don't think, yeah, my pointer is going, it is going to work on a PDF. We have a giant search box at the top of the homepage and people are used to using Google and things of that nature. That's something we incorporated in 2017 as we, we launched this website and that's the way most people get around. I'm proud to say, our number one, I'm not proud to say this, but I understand why, our number one visited spot are job opportunities. Our number two, I'm proud to say, are our COVID pages. So this year, of course, it's, everyone's concentrated on COVID and our dedicated COVID pages are the second most visited spot on our website for 2020. And I mentioned, we did 489 new pages, which were part of these microsites I'm going to share with you. And then we have over 25,000 webpages total. So here is our mask up. As you can see, this is our dedicated COVID page. You can go and get information on vaccines. I want to tell you as well, I want to give a quick shout out to our team members that do things. Liz Holliday, our webmaster, scours the internet and scours our local news and if there's a new vaccine spot, it's on here. We have great relations with our healthcare providers. They also provide us information. We also work with Audrey Kane, who is our emergency services manager, emergency management manager. But this is a one stop shop for everything. If you want stats, we have city stats, we have county stats, we have state stats. A lot of information here. There was also something else going on in 2020. So we built a website to promote the 2020 census. And then we also had a huge promotion with every blue card makes a difference. And we built out a really cool website for Lakeland Recycles. And this is actually a PDF where I could show, you can click on these different items and scroll down and it tells you what you can and can't recycle for each one of these, these type of items, whether it's glass, plastic, tin, and things of that nature. So Facebook stats. For Facebook and 2020, we ended with 62,149 fans. We had over 10 million impressions. Now, I'm going to read you what an impression is straight off our, our analytics. And impressions are the number of times a post from your page is displayed. For example, if someone sees a page updated on their Facebook news feed and then sees the same update when a friend shares it, that would count as two impressions. So we had over 10 million impressions on Facebook. Engagements, that's when someone likes your page, shares your page, comments on your page or your post. We had 889,293 fan engagements. We had 58,460 clicks. So meaning if we provided a website in any of our posts, that's how many click throughs we got, which is insane. And we had 9,000 direct messages that we responded to. That's insane. So we have, I just want to share with you, during the height of COVID, we have Liz monitoring our messaging, we have Christina Camp monitoring the messaging, we put together some canned messaging because we see that there's a trend and they, they handle the brunt of it. We also, at a time period, we put Jamin on that team as well to assist because we were getting hammered for a while. And if it raises to a certain level, then I get involved and I answer. But we had a team of three during the height, but it's primarily Liz and Christina, so I'm going to get hats off to them. These are our most popular Facebook post of 2020. I want to tell you a quick story if you don't know. And I, this, this post here is precious. So we have a young man by the name of Jayden, who loves our solid waste department. So he left a gift for his solid waste provider. Our solid waste provider named Stephen, in return, out of his own pocket, bought a garbage truck. It looks like the city of Lakeland's garbage truck and he dropped it off for Jayden. And Jayden's grandmother videoed the exchange. We posted, she shared it with us and posted on Facebook. And you can see our total engagement's almost 40,000 on that reaction, 6,200. It's super popular, but that just goes to show you how our employees go above and beyond. We all love our solid waste employees. I know on Friday, I went out and met mine and offered them some water and things of that nature because by the time I got off work, it was a late day and they were still picking up waste. And I just, hey, guys, would you like something to drink? We love them. That just goes to show you how special our city of Lakeland employees are. So I wanted to share that with you. And then Christina got in touch, Christina Camp in our department, got in touch with the grandmother and we sent him little stickers he could put on the doors of that garbage truck. So now it looks just like a city of Lakeland garbage truck. So just want to share that with you. This is something else that's very impressive. So this is Facebook video performance. And these are, this is straight from, from our analytics. As you can see, I pulled directly from our report. So our metrics for video performance, for our videos, we had 955,000 views, which equated to 401,000 minutes. And that's in 2020. That is insane. We do know this, I'm going to share with you. I don't know if I've got it on the next slide. No, I don't, I want to go back then. So we don't really pay for anything. Almost everything we do is organic, meaning that it's, it just happens on its own. We do, we, we do what's called on Facebook, promote posts every now and again. We did it for our recent value survey where you promote a post and you pay, it's not much, it's five or $10 and it promotes it and puts it in additional people's feed. So it helps with the analytics and the science behind it. But as you can see this, we only, 376 paid, out of the 321,000 views, I mean, engagements, it's insane. So really good there. And this is just some demographics, as you can see, our primary audience is, are women between the ages of 35 and 44. So Instagram, I want to share with you a little bit about Instagram as well. I'm not going to go into all of our social media, I'm just going to really hit some of the top ones. So Instagram stats, as you can see, 14,149 followers, which equated to 1.6 million impressions, 36,287 impressions, meaning that's individuals that liked it, shared it, talked about it, things of that nature. And then we had 875 actions. We don't really have a lot of actions and that's just another word for click through for Instagram, that's, that's their terminology. We don't really put a lot of, of, of web links in our Instagram, it's just mainly it's heavy photo driven. And I want to, before I go into the next slide, I just want to share with you, we have strategy. On Tuesday, we have Toby Water Warrior Tuesday, and that's both on Facebook and Instagram. Lakefront Friday on Instagram and Facebook. City snaps, and that's when we really like to promote our city employees out doing work. The employees love it, we love it, and our citizens love it. So that's, that's a very popular as well, we put that on both. We also have Wetland Wednesday with a hashtag, Wisdom Wednesday with a hashtag, Fan Photo Friday with a hashtag, Flashback Friday with a hashtag, and of course, we celebrate all of our national holidays. So here are our most popular Instagram post for 2020. You could see heavily, heavily bird influenced. We have our turkey, Gary our turkey, and then of course, some baby swans. Baby swans, if you want to, if you want to boost your own Facebook profiles, put a baby swan on there, you'll just go through the roof.
Hold a puppy.
So here's some of our Instagram stats for our stories. Starting off in 2020, we really highlighted, I met with Liz, I said, I really want to start pushing Instagram stories and that's what we've been doing. You can see, these are our published stories in 2020. What's really cool for me, I think, are the taps forward, meaning we have individuals going forward and looking at every slide. So as you can see, we have a higher rate there and very little exits, which I like to see. And here are our stories. We had 242 stories total. And I'm not going to really go into all the stats, but the tap forward, 176,000, I mean, 953 story impressions, almost 250,000. And our average reach per story is 908. So very, very, doing very well for us right now. And we're doing stories in conjunction with members from Southeastern University on Fridays and promotion for the History and Culture Center. Very popular as well, very elaborate, very movie like, just a very slick production. So if you aren't a fan of ours, all social media for city of Lakeland can be found at Lakeland.gov. So Nextdoor is another tool we like to use. Nextdoor, if you aren't part of it, it is a, it's a, it's a great tool that's really was built so neighbors could talk to neighbors. And that's what they call their fans. So we have 15,535 neighbors on our account. And with our, we typically use that to send out press releases and if we've got like an emergency warning, like a boil water notice or anything of that nature, we send out on Nextdoor. But even with sending out our press releases, we had 656,182 impressions. We cover what's known as 279 neighborhoods. Now, that's not your typical neighborhood, like you'd be defined with our neighborhood coalition groups. It's, it's like, it could be a homeowners association. It could be like, I live in Hallamwood, so we're considered our own neighborhood, Hallamwood. So that's how they, they define neighborhoods. And we had 949 posts. It does very well for us. Graphic design, as I mentioned, we did 177 projects with two primary designers, Patrick Patterson and Jamin Smith. Patrick let me know this year that over half of those projects were COVID related in some way. Now, they may not be COVID projects, but because COVID impacted so many things, they had some COVID messaging. And here's one of our many infographics that you see there. But on top of that, we did regular projects, like logos, reports, books, brochures, signage. And you can see on the, the left, this is going to be your new city signage that just recently got improved and Patrick did that, did a fantastic job. You can see our illegal dumping signage when we were having some issues there. And then of course, the new arbitorium project for the fruit trees and the flowering trees for Parks and Recreation. And this is just a sample. We could spend a lot of time just doing graphic design. Special events, we did a lot of collateral for special events, including t-shirts and infographics and signage. And here's just a little bit more of that. And again, a lot of what we did was COVID related. Infographics, signage, logos, and you can see in the bottom, bottom corner here that I'm highlighting, filters for our social media. We also did, are in the process of a campaign with our healthcare providers, Watson Clinic and Lakeland Regional Health. We have a huge social media campaign in conjunction with those two healthcare providers. And again, we have Dr. Joy Jackson with the Florida Department of Health as a guest writer for our Access Lakeland newsletter. So we're doing our very best to push the COVID messaging as well. And on top of that, we just had regular projects. Lake Morton Street markers, which they haven't come to fruition yet, but you can see the 20 miles per hour with a swan. Coloring books, Patrick does the SPCA firefighter calendar in conjunction with the fire department. And then if you didn't see this, this is one of my all time favorites, just because I love the colors, our Halloween contest. We, we couldn't have our typical trunk or treat and things of that nature that we do with the kids, so we did a Halloween contest. We, Christina had this great idea, she'll do a big basket and we'll do a contest on social media. And the, the costumes, if you didn't see, these are just the, the top ones that we chose were insane. I love the little kid is up and he actually won this one, by the way. But the Joker, oh my gosh. So fantastic. And that just goes to show you as well, of our, of our fan engagement with the community. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about LGN, Lakeland Government Network. We have a very robust video library as video on demand and you can see, that's just a screenshot of it right there, where we have our, our various videos categorized. You can go to those in categories, whether it be a workshop, a city commission meeting, our vibe video series, what have you. You can, you can click, it's indexed, you can watch just one segment. We do a really good job with that and that's through Mike Mustard, the man behind the glass back there. And hey, look at this, we got pretty good at doing live meetings as well. During the height of COVID, a lot of people were scrambling to continue with their municipal government meetings. We started with GoTo and it was baptism by fire, but we got pretty good at it. You probably don't know this, but we were getting contacted all the time by our neighboring communities and some of them are pretty large. And hey, how are you doing what you're doing? How are you, how are you using GoTo and including the, the element that we all so look forward to is with the public input. And that's why I'm pointing at the podium because we didn't have it. So we, we helped other communities do what we were doing with the phone calls. Now, sometimes I will tell you, we got pretty hectic, but we managed.
You did a great job.
And I'm just going to just share with you a few of the videos you can see is city commission meetings, special messaging from the mayor, Veterans Day ceremony, we even do some, some of our programming in Spanish for our Hispanic audience. Our Christina Camp with her city jobs, a lot of COVID messaging. And we also, we celebrate, as I mentioned, we celebrate national holidays and national days and here we are talking about Earth Day. We typically do something really big for Earth Day. This was a crazy year for everybody, so it had to be done with video this year. I'm winding down, I just want to share with you a few initiatives and City Manager Charalz, I think you'll be happy here because you haven't seen this. But here is the, here is the Lakeland Gov, and look at this, sharing idea, big button at the bottom. Look at that. Yay. So a couple of things that we're working on, you're going to see for 2021, and that's the launch of our new mobile app. And of course, not on top of our Citizens Action Center, we're going to have an element of sharing idea for our citizens if they, if they have something that'll help us be better at what we do in government. So you're going to see that. We're going to be conducting a web audit and what we do with that is, that's in preparation as we look at updating and putting a new face on our website. We try to do that every four to five years. So before we do that, it's a lot of work. We look at every single webpage, see how many visitors are going there and we determine if that needs to be included in the new website. It's a lot of work. I know when we redid the site in 2017, there was an enormous amount, I mean, I think there was over 100,000 pages. I wish I had the number in front of me, it was crazy. So you can see, we got that whittle down to a quarter because there are a lot of things people just don't go to, you know? You may post a PDF and just no one ever goes there. But, and another element I just want to talk about is internal communications. For those in the audience that may not know, we have an Intranet called Insight. We also use what we call city emails, where we can just do citywide emails to our, to our employees. But that's one area that I have vowed to work on improving. If I see an area that needs improvement, it's probably our internal communications. So you're going to see some new things happening there. I'd like to see us update Insight. I know it's, it's coming and we're going to do some things on Insight. And we've also been brainstorming with our communications on how do we improve our internal communications? And I look forward to, if there's anyone in the audience or any one of you that you have great internal communications, if you've got, we love to copy what other people are doing as well. If there's a success story somewhere, we'd like to incorporate it. So if, if you know something, feel free to share it with us, please. And then I'm just going to end one of our many staff meetings that we do on Zoom, our GoTo meeting. And I don't know what I just said with Patrick, Patrick's looked there, but I just thought that was very fitting to end with. So I, I thank you for the opportunity again and I will be glad to entertain any questions or comments.
Are there any comments? Commissioner McCollough?
That was great, Kevin. Thank you so much for that. The social media analytics are unbelievable for your small team. What do you guys use for that? Does Instagram, Liz, have its own analytics or do you guys have a different platform that pull those numbers?
Yep. We, we use Sprout Social, but you want to come in? I'll let.
I just think it was fascinating when you had the impressions and then also on the circle graph that you could tell all the different things, especially for Instagram. That was amazing.
Yeah. So yeah, Sprout Social has, and we can pull, you can, you can do a variety of different reports through Sprout Social, but yeah, that we use for, for this presentation, we pulled Facebook, Instagram and Twitter, they all have similar looking reports. And we can pull that, you know, and there's lots of other data if you need any data.
Well, congratulations. I just, I think it was so.
We try to do that every four to five years. So before we do that, it's a lot of work. We look at every single webpage, see how many visitors are going there, and we determine if that needs to be included in the new website. It's a lot of work. I know when we redid the site in 2017, there was an enormous amount, I mean, I think there was over 100,000 pages. I wish I had the number in front of me, it was crazy. So you can see, we got that little down to a quarter, because there are a lot of things people just don't go to, you know? You may post a PDF and just no one ever goes there. But, and another element I just want to talk about is internal communications. For those in the audience that may not know, we have an Intranet called Insight. We also use what we call city emails, where we can just do citywide emails to our, to our employees. But that's one area that I have vowed to work on improving. If I see an area that needs improvement, it's probably our internal communications. So you're going to see some new things happening there. I'd like to see us update Insight. I know it's, it's coming, and we're going to do some things on Insight. And we've also been brainstorming with our communications on how do we improve our internal communications? And I look forward to, if there's anyone in the audience, or any one of you, that you have great internal communications, if you've got, we, we love to copy what other people are doing as well. If, if there's a success story somewhere, we'd like to incorporate it. So if, if you know something, feel free to share it with us, please. And then, I'm just going to end one of our many staff meetings that we do on Zoom, our on GoTo meeting. And I don't know what I just said with Patrick. Patrick's looked there, but I, I just thought that was very fitting to end with. So I, I thank you for the opportunity again, and I will be glad to entertain any questions or comments.
Are there any comments? Commissioner McClellan.
That was great, Kevin. Thank you so much for that. The social media analytics are unbelievable for your small team. What do you guys use for that analy, does I, does Instagram, Liz, have its own analytics? Or do you guys have a different platform that pull those numbers?
Yep. We, we use Sprout Social, but you want to come in? I'll let.
I just think it was fascinating when you had the impressions and then also on the circle graph that you could tell all the different things, especially for Instagram. That was amazing.
So yeah, Sprout Social has, and we can pull, you can, you can do a variety of different reports through Sprout Social, but yeah, that we use, for, for this presentation, we pulled Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, they all have similar looking reports. And we can pull that, you know, and there's lots of other data, if you need any data.
Well, congratulations. I just, I think it was so impressive. Thank you all both.
Commissioner McClellan and Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you to your team as well, because there's a lot that goes on, as you mentioned, all of the things that you're juggling throughout the year. I, I could spend a lot of time talking about this, but we'll save that for our lunches, our one-on-one meetings. But you mentioned that we received 9,000 direct messages. I don't know if that was through Facebook or just social media, you know, across the board. But can you talk about how you're handling that? Because that growth that we've seen in people contacting organizations from a customer service standpoint, and it's getting to where it's hard, I think, to fall on the communications department. And so just that journey, that process, how you're handling that growth.
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. As I mentioned, when we were getting, there was one point, I think we got 1,201 day, and that was our first mask resolution. We got 1,200 instant messages that first day. So we had to, typically, that's Liz answering those. She said she couldn't hand, keep up, which I totally understand. Put Christina on it as well, and put Jamin on it, and they worked on that for a, a couple of days together. What we typically do, and I take pride in it, we answer everything almost immediately. The only things we don't answer immediately are those things that come in overnight. We have a, a boilerplate message that goes out after 5:00 PM, but even after 5:00 PM, many of us are monitoring the social media, and we answer it. What we found, and this is crazy to me, what we found over time, people are contacting us through messaging instead of dialing 911. They're contacting us for emergency medical services, they're contacting us, my lights are out, I, I, but I paid my bill, what can I do? I mean, and these things are coming in at seven, eight o'clock at night, and we have to, you have to respond, especially if it's an emergency medical situation. It's just crazy, the way the public has shifted, the way they want to communicate with local government. We are part of a group called Government and Social Media. It's a lot of municipalities and local governments, and this is one group, and we share information with each other. I just noticed recently, and I really haven't had a chance to talk to Liz about it, because I just saw it early last week, there are some municipalities that are now doing 24-hour-a-day monitoring of their social media. I don't want to get to that point, but if that's the way we evolve and have to get to, we may, there may be a day sometime. So we're, I think we've got a good handle on it now. I hope I answered your question. But there, we're seeing the shift, where it used to be phone calls, my phone doesn't hardly ring anymore, it's an email. Everything's email, or we used, what used to be all emails is now shifted to direct messages through social media.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Madden.
Thank you. Well, that was, I was so excited to see those giant numbers on all of your social media handles. So that was terrific. I did notice that on Instagram, it looked like you had on the stories the percent increase, you know? I would really love to see a graph, like, you know, how radically, and, you know, we had increased in 2020. I mean, in my mind, it feels like it was an explosion of feedback from the community and on social media with the national elections and things, but maybe it wasn't as explosive as I thought.
So were you asking in particular, just on the stories?
Really, just on all your social media handles? Like you said, like, you know, 1,200 a day. I mean, is that a record? I would anticipate that's a record. You know, and even was the whole year a record? Record-breaking, smashing every day is what I'm anticipating, you know, that's what I feel, but I don't know, I didn't see the data.
I wouldn't say that 2020 was a total social media smashing record, but we, we, we broke a lot of our personal best, if, if we say that. Like, our, our direct messages, that's 9,000 that we answered. Some of them didn't warrant an answer, it was just people ranting. We got a lot of those. And then we just put a boilerplate little copy, paste, copy, paste, but we answered 9,000. Instagram stories, this is definitely a record for us, because we weren't doing it in 2020. But we'd be glad to put together some reports and show some trending for you.
I want to just be curious too, to see if in 2021, people, that subsides, you know, people are feeling a little, you know, they don't need to share, you know, as much, hopefully, because, you know, 2021 is a nice, easy, peaceful, wonderful year.
Fingers crossed.
So that was my question about, you know, kind of the radical growth chart. But I wrote, I wrote this down, you know, just as you were presenting, you know, I'm just writing down sterling example of civility under fire. And Kevin Cook, if you and your team could give lessons to, you know, the nation, the globe at large, on how to keep a civil town, to give us a presentation about the social media and your posts, and what was popular in 2020, and to feel happy and positive about our city, to think about baby swans and about people loving our solid waste, when if I aggregated all the feedback that I received in my email box this past year, the presentation would not have felt as positive and hopeful. And so I am so proud of you and your team, that in spite of the negativism and just, you know, the vitriolic speech that people are inclined to use on their social media posts, and that what we've witnessed on a national scale, probably on a global scale this past year, for you and your team to be able to continue to wake up every single day, and to communicate positively, and to put the city in such a great light, and to respond, and I've seen your responses. I, I didn't know you were the last one to, to join in on the conversation, but I could tell when it did, it got a little hot and spicy, and then Kevin comes in. But I just, I think most people, you know, we don't have a big wide audience probably that watch this, but I think most people that would hear this presentation would see the shining example that you and your team are, in, in spite of the fact that this is not the usual. You know, no matter what media outlet you follow, I can't think of one that, you know, comes close to the high level of professionalism, civility, and positivity, seriously. And I feel so proud to be a part of the City of Lakeland, in the way y'all communicate.
Commissioner Salvage.
Thank you, Mayor. Sun and Fountain has just announced that they're going to go ahead this year. Can you predict, Kevin, the iconic events that we're used to seeing, Derby Day, Red White and Kaboom, the Hispanic Festival, the Christmas Parade? Too early to say what's going to happen with those?
I wish I had a crystal ball. I want to share with your personal story. I just found out today, my son, who plays NCAA Division Lacrosse, Division II Lacrosse, that they're actually going to have a season. So I, if, yes.
So Derby Day, I think it's an April thing, that's, are they planning that, Elvin? Are they planning to have it?
We have not heard from them. We do know that Sun and Fun is moving forward, we are talking about Christmas Parade this year, thank goodness. We're talking about Red, White and Kaboom this year. I, we are, I just sent something to Christina Camp earlier, because we do a Citizens Academy, which is one of the programs I thoroughly love. We create ambassadors for the City of Lakeland. And I'm proud to say, we've had city commissioners serve after they went through the Citizens Academy, and the late Glenn Higgins was one of them. I, I just, it's, we just told our Citizens Academy group, we're going forward in April. So I, I certainly hope so, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Thank you, Kevin. You know, for years, we've often shared, as you reported to us, the magnitude of work, even what Commissioner Madden alluded to, of course, and how well, you know, when your team was not what it was even today, what it is today, excuse me, and got those things done and got things accomplished. So I know it's, it's, it's got to be a feat to be able to keep up with everything that you've either shared with us today. But now, you mentioned about talking to or sharing with sister cities. Could be names on those ones that are bigger than us, that you've been able to have shared kind of information with to be able to help them out?
Sure. So we talked to the school board when we were taking audience feedback on how to, how to assist those, that. We talked to the county, I had conversations with the City of Tampa. So those are three of the top that, that we talked to and assisted. Now, a lot of them weren't on our platform, they were using Zoom, but we just talked about the process of how you take phone calls coming in, how are you monitoring that? Because they're like, do you guys have a switchboard? Like, no, we don't, it's one person. But it's just that thought process we, we helped with.
Yeah, being able to share. They can best do some things as well.
And on top of that, as I told you, we're part of a government and social media group, and we communicate all the time. And if there's something that we're looking for, has someone else done this? I'll always ask Liz, will you reach out to the group and see if they've done something a certain way? And they do it to us as well. We, we all share what's working, success stories, and what's not working. And we, especially during COVID, I mean, everybody was asking, what are you doing for COVID? We're getting slaughtered out here. As Commissioner Madden stated, it's a highly volatile subject, especially with masks, and it.
Really?
Yeah. Did well. Among us even, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't notice.
There are times, I want to, I want to share, just real quickly, and I, I don't get on the soapbox very often, where I have a great team. I am blessed that I got this job in 2020. I mean, in, in the year 2000, I've been here and doing this for 20 years. The team that we have, they're great. They, no problem, we got to work after hours, we do it. We got to monitor social media after 5 o'clock, we do it. It's a great team. But there's times when it gets hard, when you've got people just hammering you, hammering you, hammering you, and they're using foul language. As you know, you've gotten emails, and there are times when Christina and Liz both would come to me and goes, you got to take this one, I can't deal with this anymore. And that's typically when I would step in.
Good job.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Dick and Kevin, you'll do a great job.
Thank you, sir.
The things I like the most, little posters in the, in the elevator, it gets me constant reminder.
Old school!
Even though I get the emails and Lake Live and all the other things, that constant reminder when I go up, I feel something, you know, it's happened today, it's happened tomorrow, and all the other things that y'all do is greatly appreciated. Of course, you had mentioned to me a couple years ago, how many hits you have, parades, what's the number of that in one year?
Oh, I, I don't remember, I, I look at so many numbers, I could pull that up for you, but it's.
I don't like a half minute or something.
Yeah, we could easily pull that up again, but it's, it's pretty crazy. Our Christmas parade, we have high, our video on demand, it's crazy.
We are spending a lot of time talking about your accolades, and they're well-deserved. And I want to compliment you from the standpoint of thinking of the changes you've seen since 2000 in those 20 years, and the way people are communicating. And acknowledge the fact that you, the, one of the reasons on our community value survey, we don't have a big gap in communications anymore, is because you do a fabulous job of communicating as we go through issues in the city. And you have adapted very, very well to all the different tools. And the fact that we're in a 2021, you're at post-2020, is not going to be any different. We're still going to have those same pressures, and you're still going to have many, many.
The numbers from January and February alone are going to kick our 2021 numbers. I mean, we're on, we're on a record to break all this, so.
So we, we just appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you, again. Let's have some.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no proclamations and no more presentations, which brings us to Chairman Madden's of the Municipal Boards and Committee report. Commissioner Madden.
Okay. The Municipal Boards Committee met via GoTo meeting. The meeting was available for public viewing online, of course, thanks to our great communications team on the local cable channels. Commissioner Stephanie Madden, Chair and Mayor Bill Mutt, and Commissioner Sarah McCauley members were present. Commissioners Don Salvage, Chad McCloud, Bill Reed, and Philip Walker were also present, along with staff. Commissioner Stephanie Madden called the meeting to order at 8:18 a.m. Commissioner Stephanie Madden reviewed, recommended appointment. There was a recommendation from Matthew Lyons for the Planning and Zoning Board to appoint Joseph Locke to fulfill an unexpired term beginning February 15, 2021, and ending August 18, 2022. This appointment will serve as Mr. Locke's first term on the board. The action was that Commissioner Sarah McCauley moved to approve the appointment, Mayor Bill Mutt second, and the motion carried unanimously. The committee adjourned at 8:19 a.m.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Bringing us to Chairman of our Real Estate and Transportation Committee, Commissioner Reed, to make the second report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Real Estate and Transportation met by GoTo meeting on February 12, Friday morning. Myself called the meeting to order. Our members were Mayor Mutt and Phil Walker. Also present was Mr. Salvage, McCauley, Madden, and McCloud. The order of business was two orders. Number one, for sale of city-owned property at 47, excuse me, 417 North Massachusetts Pure 1C, it's a purchase of single-person property owned by the city located at 47 North Massachusetts Avenue. They can incorporate it with their existing property as a 0.05 acre development parcel assessed at $7,622, according to the property appraiser's office. City staff established a minimum acceptable bid, which would equal 120% of the estimated value. Pure C1 is the only, was the only bidder at $20,000. This amount exceeded the minimum bid by $9,146.40. This request follows the City of Lakeland's process for sale of city-owned property located within the CRA. The City Department and Public and Private Utilities reviewed the request and had no objection to the sale of this property. The staff recommended the commission approve the sale of 417 North Massachusetts Avenue to Pure C1 for $20,000. Commissioner Walker moved to approve the recommendation, Mayor Mutt seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. The second order of business was the sale of city-owned property located at 701 West Fourth Street. The Dream Center of Lakeland, Inc., would like to purchase a single parcel of city-owned property located at 701 West Fourth Street, so that they may incorporate it into their existing property. This 0.06 acres developed parcel is currently assessed value of $4,680, according to the Polk County Property Appraiser. City staff established a minimum acceptable bid, which is equal to 120% of the estimated value. The Dream Center was the only bidder offering a acceptable bid of $5,616. This request follows the City of Lakeland's process for the sale of city-owned property located within the CRA. The City Department and Public and Private Utilities reviewed the request and had no objection to the sale of this property. Staff recommended the city approve the sale of 701 West Fourth Street to the Dream Center in the amount of $5,616. Commissioner Walker moved to approve the recommendation, Commissioner Bill Reed seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. The, and our meeting adjourned at 8:26 a.m. that morning.
Very efficient, sir. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
And would you like to do both items in that motion?
Sure.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Okay, discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same, unanimously passes as well. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor moved to approve the consent agenda as printed with any amended amendments for January 29 through February 1st.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by any members of the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same, it is approved. We have no equalization hearing or request from the general public. That brings us to public hearings, Resolutions B1, 3B1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one resolution, proposed Resolution Number 21-009, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, electing to utilize a uniform method of collecting non-avalanche assessments, as authorized under Section 197.3632 Florida statutes for collecting non-avalanche assessments against certain lots abutting at Heather Point Drive in the City of Lakeland, adopting findings stating the need for the levy of said assessments, provided for the mailing of this resolution, provided an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McCloud, and there was a second by, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Walker, okay. A discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? This is a real call vote, Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. Bringing us, and there is no Community Redevelopment Agency report, bringing us to our City Manager, 5A, City Manager Charalz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have three items for presentation this afternoon. The first item would be a recommendation regarding cooperative funding, a cooperative funding grant agreement with the Southwest Florida Water Management District for Crystal Lake Water Quality Improvement Study. The City of Lakeland has been awarded a reimbursable 50% matching cooperative funding initiative grant from the Southwest Florida Water Management District for the Crystal Lake Water Quality Improvement Study. The proposed project consists of a feasibility study to evaluate nutrient reduction sediment treatment options to improve water quality in Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake does not meet current water quality standards and has a Florida Department of Environmental Protection mandated nutrient reduction plan. A previous study indicated that sediment cycling contributes over 90% of the phosphorus load to the lake. The feasibility study will evaluate options to reduce the phosphorus flux from the sediments to improve water quality. The cooperative funding agreement between Swift Mud and the City of Lakeland for the Crystal Lake Water Quality Improvement Study outlines the obligations of both parties, deliverables, project schedule, and budget. The parties anticipate the total cost of the project will be $200,000. Swift Mud, through the agreement, agrees to reimburse the city for 50% of all allowable costs up to $100,000. Funding for this project is provided in the FY21 Stormwater Utility Fee Budget. It should also be noted that Polk County Parks and Natural Resources Division has agreed to continue the co-fund water quality assessment, monitoring and restoration projects at 30% of the costs incurred via reimbursement to the City of Lakeland upon completion of the project. It is recommended that the City Commission authorize the appropriate city officials to execute the cooperative funding agreement as presented. That completes presentation.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion by commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Again, not to be redundant, and we talked about it briefly this morning and again on Friday. They're going to be expanding Crystal Lake Boulevard, Crystal, I mean, Chris Comby Road in the near future, and they're going to do a roundabout on that Skyview intersection there, and I would hope that the city and the DOT would cooperate and make sure that we don't do, we do this properly so we don't have to spend extra money in the near future to redo something again.
Do it right the first time.
Make sure everybody knows about it.
All right. Any other, any other questions or comments by commissioners? Any by the audience at all? Okay, this is a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
There was a comment.
Well, I did just want to look to Lori Smith, our expert. I know we did get to talk about it a little bit on Friday, but do you feel like you'd like to contribute anything to that conversation for the public with regard to the water quality and how we coordinate with FDOT?
Sorry, didn't see her. Yes, perfect, thank you, Lori. Lori Smith.
Lori Smith, Manager of Lakes and Stormwater, and thank you for the question. So, this is the first phase of funding for the project. Typically, and our experience has always been with Swift Mud, is once you get agreement that they're going to start funding a project, they will continue to fund it through its completion. So, this is the feasibility study that will allow us to select what restoration plan we're going to use. So, we will go back with the findings and say, "This is the technology we're selecting, we're going to submit another grant application for them to pay 50% of the restoration work." So, it's important for us to start on the road in the very beginning so that we can go back and help get funding to clean up our lakes.
And then their eyes are on that intersection, kind of bringing attention to it as they go and build the roundabout and other things that might also contribute.
Yes, yes. So, DOT obviously is a contributor of stormwater load to the lake, so we've had multiple discussions about that. Polk County also contributes to the lake, that's why Polk County is also going to be working towards reimbursement. DOT, in lieu of reimbursing money, agrees to treat stormwater through, while they're doing the expansion of the road, they're going to be doing stormwater retention and treatment along Comby Road. So, that will also help with keeping additional nutrients out of the lake. So, if we restore the lake, DOT is obviously helping us with maintaining that in the future.
Good.
Commissioner McLeod.
Lori, just to follow on that, for the future, I mean, once a lake is restored, the nutrient reduction plan is in place, is it common for it to stay that way? I mean, do you typically have cycles where you're up and down, you're back to the same problem, you know, years down the road, or how does that work?
It's, I'm trying to think of an analogy. So, you're going to clean something up, right? Like your house, your house gets dirty, you clean it up. If you don't maintain it, you don't continue to vacuum and dust, it's going to get dirty again. So, our plan is to maintain BMPs such as stormwater treatment to keep the nutrients from being brought back into the lake.
So, it's an active plan, it's...
Yes, it's an active plan. So, we will reduce the nutrients in the lake by addressing the sediments, and then we will put BMPs in the stormwater system so that we keep them from getting back into the lake.
Thank you.
Great discussion. Commissioner Reed.
Do you have any kind of auctionation process, like a fountain or water pump?
That could be an option, but the lake's a little bit large for that. You'd have to put a very large fountain and probably multiple in there. So, we're looking at that for some of our smaller lakes like Mirren Morton.
Any other comments? Right, anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
Just think this is a great project, and you know, we are mandated by the state to clean this lake, so it's a great opportunity for us to get assistance from another agency.
Thank you. Again, any other comments from the audience? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Thank you. Item B.
Thank you. The next item is regarding a recommendation for contracts in support of upgrading to a Category 3 instrument landing system at the Lakeland Lender International Airport, for the installation of the Approach Lighting System Shelter, purchase of Depot spares for the shelter, and for the relocation of the Glide Slope. The upgrading to a Cat 3 ILS is progressing on schedule, and the airport needs to enter into contracts with companies who are under contract with the Federal Aviation Administration to fabricate and install the building that will house the Approach Lighting System, purchasing of Depot spares for the system, and professional services to relocate the Glide Slope. The building to house the system will be prefabricated, and the building has been specifically identified by the FAA to be used to house all of its Approach Lighting System equipment within the southern region. The vendor under contract with the FAA, A-Buck Incorporated, has provided a quote of $337,066 for its services to provide and install the required shelter, provide necessary heating and cooling equipment, fire-related walls, and wall penetrations as required. The FAA has agreed to maintain the system once it is operational, which will release the airport from any ongoing maintenance cost. As part of the agreement, however, the FAA is requiring the airport to provide them with Depot spares, which are critical replacement parts that it retains to be used for any future repairs to minimize any downtime. The Depot spares are to be purchased from New Bedford Panoramic, the sole source for the FAA, for $161,472, including estimated freight charges. The Glide Slope is presently located within the object-free area of Runway 927, which is permissible when operating under a Category 1 or 2 ILS system. However, it is required to be located outside of the object-free area when operating under a Category 3 ILS. The Glide Slope provides the proper path of descent for an aircraft preparing to land indicated by a radio beam. The airport has received a quote from Thales USA ATM in the amount of $87,997 to provide the services to uninstall the Glide Slope from the existing location and reinstall in the new location, and support the FAA in commissioning the flight check of the system. It is recommended that the City Commission authorize the appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement with A-Buck Incorporated in the amount of $337,066 to provide and install the system shelter, subject to Florida Department of Transportation approvals. It is also recommended that the City Commission authorize the appropriate city officials to place the order to purchase the additional Depot spares required by the FAA in the amount that was presented. In addition, it is also recommended that the City Commission authorize the appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement with Thales USA ATM in the amount of $87,997 to provide the professional services related to the relocation of the Glide Slope, subject to Florida Department of Transportation approvals. No appropriations are required to support this request, and that completes presentation.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McCarley, a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Walker, and then a question by Commissioner McCarley.
Hey, Mr. Conrad, I just, we have talked about this for a while. Could you, for the public, just say when this project started and what phase we're in and when it might be finished?
Good afternoon, Gene Conrad, Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners. I think the ILS started, our effort started when we executed our agreement with Amazon, because that was part of the agreement with them, was to upgrade it to a Cat 3. So, that was back in 2019, but our planning probably started back in 2018, because we knew we were going to go to special authorization Cat 2, and then subsequently to a Cat 3. And right now, we're on, we're on schedule to certify and get the system flight checked in October, and for it to be ready to go and chartered, so pilots can use it in November of this year.
I just wanted you to say that for the public to understand, because this is something that's probably been in your master plan for a while, and then, like you said, started talking about it in 18, and then moved forward in 19, and we're going to come to a conclusion here, we're going to land the plane, no pun intended.
Yes.
Time to have this...
Pun intended. But I mean, it's a very complex system. I think there's only 60 airports in the United States that have these systems. And Adam Lunn, as we talked about on Friday, our operations manager's been spearheading this project for us and done a remarkable job. And our, our ability to get it expeditiously put in place and certified is unheard of, actually, and that's what we've been hearing around the country. And also, if I could point out one other thing, and the City Manager brought up, is that the fact that the FAA has agreed to maintain this system, they don't always do that, it's a very complex system. Now, granted, we're buying the spare Depot spare parts, but in perpetuity, they're taking care of the system and will maintain it, make sure it's operational, so that onus is off the airport and the city, you know, moving forward.
I'm glad you added that, because I do think that for, back to the public and our constituents, the fact that you worked so well with FAA and FDOT throughout this process, as you're under, the airport has a lot of regulatory work that they have to do and a lot of moving parts to come together, so I just wanted you to sort of detail that and the timeline. Thanks for sharing that, but we, I think it's a great process.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions by commissioners? Any by the audience? This is a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes, and it's exciting. Item C.
The final item is a recommendation regarding an award of a bid to Aviation Construction and Electric LLC and for a contract amendment with Atkins North America for construction oversight of the airfield lighting upgrades for Phase 2 of the ILS Category 3 project at the airport. The airport is upgrading its existing instrument landing system to a Category 3 ILS to be completed by November 2021, as the airport director had just discussed. The airport updated the commission on February 1st that the design for the ILS Cat 3 project had been separated into three phases. The airport received approvals to proceed with Phase 1, and the airport is now ready to commence with Phase 2. The airfield lighting upgrade work was advertised under bid number 1020, with four companies responding to the bid. The airport's engineering firm, Atkins North America, along with airport staff, reviewed all four bid responses. The low bidder, Aviation Construction and Electric, was determined to be the lowest and most responsive bidder with a bid of $1,974,590.20. Atkins North America will provide the construction administration services for Phase 2 of the project for a not-to-exceed amount of $321,755 under an amendment to their existing contract. It is recommended that the City Commission authorize the appropriate city officials to enter into a construction contract with Aviation Construction and Electric in the amount presented, and subject to approvals from the Florida Department of Transportation. It is also recommended that the City Commission authorize the appropriate city officials to enter the amendment with Atkins North America in the not-to-exceed amount presented for construction administration, and subject to approvals from the Florida Department of Transportation. No appropriations are required for this request, and that completes presentation.
Move to approve.
And a motion to approve in a second, discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, also unanimously passes. That brings us back to the City Attorney and a first reading, 6A1.
Thank you, we have one ordinance for first reading. Florida law requires that ordinances be read by title twice with a public hearing at the second, second meeting on the ordinance, which will occur on March 1st. That will be the time when public comment will be taken. The ordinance is Prop. 21-008, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, relating to retiree healthcare expenses, making findings, admitting and restating the City of Lakeland Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date. Once again, that'll come back for a public hearing on March 1st.
Next, we move to resolutions 1.
First resolution is Prop. 21-010, a resolution relating to public utility easements, making findings vacating an existing public utility easement located at 4210 Old Tampa Highway, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Walker?
Second.
Yep, and it's...
I made the motion, but we can...
Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner Walker. This is hard from down there, I don't know why, it's the field of vision or something. All right, any discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? Okay, well, this is a roll call vote, start with Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye, unanimously passes.
Next is Prop. 21-011, a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement for the subordination of city utility interests located at the State Road 572 Drainfield Road at Don Emerson Drive, intersection within parcel 500.2, making findings, providing an effective date.
Move to approve.
And a second by Commissioner McLeod. All right, discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience?
Just to follow up on something that was asked on Friday, Commissioner Madden asked about fiber at this location, and I checked with our telecommunications department, and there is fiber at this location that will have to be relocated if, if our Lakeland electric poles are relocated. They do this on a fairly routine basis, and they don't think it would be very disruptive to services out there if that happens.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye, yes, unanimously passes. That brings us then to our miscellaneous reports, C1.
C1 is a task authorization with American Acquisition Group for easement acquisition services for the Mandela Road Water Main Extension. This is going to be the installation of a 12-inch water main along Mandela Road, where we don't have, currently have existing right-of-way and sufficient amount to put the water main. So, American Acquisition will provide all the title and appraisal work, approach proprietors, and negotiate for the various easements that we need for this project. David Bayhan of Water Utilities is here, if you need more information about that. I know that he has a map that would show where this line will be installed, if you would like to see that.
Yeah, and we have a copy of that attached. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner McLeod. All right. Any questions for David? Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Dave. Glad you're here. As you, as you know, we have a lot of development coming along, proposal on that road, and with the airport there, we're getting more and more traffic, and we're getting more and more and more complaints from our neighbors. And, and I think, I mean, you mentioned Friday, this is not a high priority, but it's, we have the money to do it now for just starting the acquisition right of way, is that a fair statement?
Yes, correct. For the record, David Bayhan, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. So, yes, we have budgeted money for the easement acquisition. We actually have money to start some construction. Originally, the plan was to develop the county line road, which has been completed, and the map that's on the screen now, the yellow section, is the piece that's already been completed. There was also a little, a piece that went down Drainfield Road that was going to connect, that was going to be later, but we ended up actually doing that, as it turned out, we didn't have as far to go, and we ended up incorporating that into the county line project. So, that piece is already connected. It runs all the way down County Line Road, is not yet connected to the Pipkin Road section at Publix, we're waiting on some final touches with the Publix development, that's where the circle is. So, it's all, it's all ready to be connected, it's within feet of being connected, we're just waiting for the final touches for the Publix development. So, this easement acquisition is for the green highlighted section on Mandela Road, and it is planned for construction. We do have some money now for construction, we certainly have money budgeted for the easement acquisition, but this is primarily for the circulation, water quality, looping redundancy part, and if development does occur in the area, we'd be ready for that.
Again, I would never thought I would oppose water being run somewhere to, to spiteful growth, but, and that may be a case in the future, I don't know about that, but, so when would we, do we have an estimated cost on the acquisitions right of way?
No, sir, not until we get the appraisals, we wouldn't know the estimated cost of those.
Once we get the appraisals and get the actual right-of-way bill, we don't have to necessarily build a water, put the water lens right now, it would, it would not want to need a lift station, we have plenty of pressure to circulate it, go for a loop.
Right, no, we wouldn't have to build it, I mean, it would, we do have certain water quality issues in that area today with certain, with what I would call stale water. So, without the circulation, we end up with low chlorine residuals in areas, and we check those periodically, and we have to flush that water, that water just goes on the ground, unfortunately. By making the loops and the tie-ins together like that, that prevents that water from just sitting in the pipe, it's all circulating better. So, we would not have to construct that, but this is part of the overall Southwest expansion plan.
Thank you. And the probability is high it will be constructed, is it not?
Certainly, yes, sir.
Commissioner Madden?
Yes, thank you. So, obviously, you know, the public might know we had a conversation on Friday, not just for water and drinking water, but I know in that area, there's been a lot of flooding and stormwater, and all the connections there are of high concern to the folks that live
there. I think it should be for anyone who wants to develop and buy a new home. There's also the airport, you know, and the noise concerns. So it's just become a higher priority for this body to just, anytime you hear something's happening in that area, to make sure all the dots are connecting and all the teams are looking into that. I know also it goes from city to county and there's some talks of annexing county land into city. And so I'm curious with that regard, is this, you know, in preparation for things like that, for when we do, you know, potentially annex some of the county land out there for development to connect through to there?
So the Mandela Road extension is not necessarily for any one development or any of the annexation that may or may not be happening. Quite frankly, I don't have any clue what may be happening in development wise. This was simply as we developed the county line road down to the Publix and we needed that for the hydraulic needs for the Publix development and all the development that is occurring along Pipkin. It, hydraulically and water quality, it made sense to reconnect down Mandela and Drainfield to connect that into loop that system. So the Mandela Road is not planned for any specific development, but if that development were to happen, this would only, you know, solidify our system and beef that up in that area.
So it becomes kind of the backbone or the main water line?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions by commissioners or comments? Any by the audience? Thank you, David. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Bringing us to item number two.
Item number two is our annual sun and fund use agreement. This will allow sun and fund to use the grounds of Lakeland Lender International Airport for their annual event, which is scheduled to occur on April 13th through 18th. The primary things that this agreement accomplishes is, one, secures the sun and fund's identification and insurance of the city. This agreement calls for generalized liability insurance in favor of the city of $1 million per any occurrence that might happen out there. Also includes umbrella liability insurance of $5 million and then fire and casualty insurance, up to 90% of the replacement costs of any buildings or structures that might be damaged by a fire or other casualty. The other main thing that this agreement does is provide, that sun and fund will provide the reasonable cost of providing additional air traffic controllers necessary for this event.
Move to approve.
Approval.
And there's a motion to approve by Commissioner Reed, our sun and fund representative, and a second by Commissioner McCarthy. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Item three.
Item three is a proposed substantial amendment to our CDBG home action plan for, to recognize the receipt of additional CARES Act funding in the amount of $787,276. It provides for how that, how those funds will potentially be used. I believe Andy Gibson is here, may want to make a brief presentation in order to meet all of the public care requirements for this.
Andy, if you don't mind, just continue to augment that a little bit and then we will take a motion on it.
Okay. Good morning. Andy Gibson, Housing Programs Coordinator for Community and Economic Development. So this is the second, actually the third round, but the second part for the city for CDBG COVID three funds. We were awarded five, $787,000 and we have elected to do rental rehab, rental assistance, I'm sorry, got mixed up, mortgage assistance and some staff, of course, time. But in addition to that, we've elected to do some public services. So we have been encouraged to go ahead and assist those public services who are responding to the COVID. And in particular, we receive one, we sent out 100 requests for proposals. We received 16 back. And of those, Florida Rural Legal Services, of course, would assist with those folks who are being evicted from their homes. Lakeland Volunteer Medicine and Talbot House are, they are pretty much assisting with those homeless and folks working poor or who need medical assistance in, in the future vaccines. And of course, Peace River, their main, of course, work is mental health. But what they've elected to do, I think out of five or six of their locations, they're putting in some air conditioning to assist those folks who are coming in. So with Peace River, they are assisting pretty much the highest number of about 14,000 folks who go in and out of their buildings on a yearly basis. So we do ask the city commission's approval to afford this amendment to HUD for approval. And in a matter of probably weeks, we're probably beginning to funding.
Excellent. There's a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Andy, how soon will we be advertising, getting this out to the public? As soon as we approve it, would you always start dispensing the information about those that need to make application or whatever?
Currently, we're still taking applications for rental assistance. So the applications are available if you need assistance. For the mortgage assistance, it would be a matter of submitting the plan and doing some environmental reviews to submit to HUD. So I would think it would be in a matter of 30, 30 to 60 days for the mortgage assistance. And of course, you know, with the $21 million that's coming from the county, we are, we may get a portion of that over a million dollars to assist, of course, with rental assistance again.
So it'd be added to this.
So it'd be added to this.
Right.
And of course, with those funds, we should spend those as of 9/30/2020. So when you're looking at that, the CDBG funds will probably be, 21, thank you. The CDBG funds has a deadline of three years. So we'll probably be holding on to this, these funds and spending the county's money.
Use the county's money as far as, right.
City manager Shrouse has a comment he'd like to add.
I just, again, as I did on Friday, I want to commend Ms. Gibson and also I failed to mention Ms. Teresa Miao for the way that they handled this, our processes related to the COVID funding and that we received. The way that this program was managed is, is a direct reflection of the reason why we are receiving this additional funding. So I want to congratulate and thank them and their staff that worked so hard and diligently on this.
Thank you very much. Other comments by commissioners for questions? Any by the audience? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. That brings us to item number five.
And the final item is a seventh amendment to our purchase and sell agreement between the city of Lakeland and Lake Wire Development Company. This is relating to a property that the city owns that is just south of the intersection of Kathleen Road and George Jenkins Boulevard. It's approximately three acre parcel and also is just north of the old Florida tile site, which is owned by Lake Wire Development Company. They are seeking to combine those two parcels into a unified development parcel for development by a third party. We've been having discussions since agenda study Friday with Lake Wire Development and the attorney team for the developer that just concluded this afternoon. So I'll just try to walk you through what we've got here. The seventh amendment accomplishes three things. One, when the DOT transferred the right of way for the old Kathleen Road that's on, on the city site, it's just basically a stubout that terminates in the retaining wall for George Jenkins Boulevard, they also conveyed to the city a 12-foot strip along that retaining wall. So this agreement, one, includes that, that 12-foot strip as part of the property that the city will be transferring to Lake Wire Development once we get to that point. The second thing that this development agreement accompl, or purchase agreement accomplishes is that it provides that once the right of way for the old Kathleen Road is vacated, and we'll need to vacate that so that the developer can bind all those parcels together, that both the city and Lake Wire Development or Lake Wire Development's successors and title will have access to the entirety of that vacated right of way for purposes of utilities. So those are two pretty straightforward items. Then the third item, third, third thing that this amendment accomplishes is, as, as we discussed on Friday, the proposed developer for this property was concerned about a provision in the current purchase and sell agreement that gives the city commission, you know, review authority over any kind of development plans, conceptual development plans that might go on that property that was creating complications in Lake Wire Development's negotiations with the prospective developer, timing issues and other complications. So the parties, in lieu of that, have agreed to remove that provision, subject to city commission approval, and instead include a list of uses that would normally be permitted in the C6 zoning district that this property is in, but would be prohibited for purposes of this particular development. And that list is on the very, well, second to last page or the, there's, there's a kind of technical list of changes in the two previous pages before that indicate the prohibited uses list that we have come up with after discussions with city staff, Lake Wire Development and the developers' attorneys. And I'll just walk through that. Essentially, what the developer and their attorneys wanted to do was, instead of just having a list of uses that would not be allowed, they wanted those a little more defined. So we actually, instead of just specifying bed and breakfast, for example, we put the definition that's in our land development code of a bed and breakfast so that everybody's on the same page. So you'll see all that throughout this exhibit. And then starting with, with item number four, what, I'll just go through what each of these clarify. One, item four deals with catering establishments and, and this just, just makes clear that the only thing that we're prohibiting are catering establishments as a principal use. So that line is there, as you can see, says, however restaurants providing in-person dining that also offer catering services shall not be prohibited. So catering service associated with a restaurant would, would still be allowed on this property. The second major change would be to colleges, junior colleges, universities and seminaries that specifies that those types of institutions, as long as they're a tenant in a multi-tenant office building, would not be prohibited. Going to number nine, daycare centers for children, a normal daycare center would still continue to be prohibited, but this, this, the changes indicate that any first class, first-class childcare center or childcare arrangement, such as for a Goddard School or Montessori School, that is a tenant or occupant of a multi-tenant mixed-use building would still be permitted on this property. And also any childcare center, childcare, childcare arrangement that is an amenity for tenants as part of a Class A office building would, would continue to be permitted. Then going to item number 12, our list prohibits hospitals and emergency rooms, but once again, we're going to allow, recommending that, that we allow urgent care facilities or any kind of medical office in which the medical staff provide diagnosis or treatment to their patients on an emergency or an unplanned basis. So where that type of services provided more as a ancillary use as opposed to a primary use. And then finally, in paragraph 13, deal radio transmission towers. We are continuing to prohibit or recommend that we prohibit towers above buildings in excess of 60, 50 feet. But the developer had requested the permission to include antennas, satellite dishes or other types of structures like that, no more than 10 feet high on top of buildings that are in excess of 50 feet. So with those changes, we're all on the same page with Lake Wire Development and the prospective developer at this point and recommend that for your approval. David Bunch and Chris Fear representing Lake Wire here, if you have any questions of them.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Commissioner McCarthy, a second? By Commissioner Madden. I'm going to give that one. It's kind of concurrent. All right. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Selvich.
Palmer, it's been so many lists given to us and Deleesh and I've lost track of what can go there.
And that's an important point, that this list is only, you know, a list of uses that are permitted that are going to be prohibited for this particular use. Any other use that is normally permitted in C6 is, will continue to be allowed on this property. This list, you know, there are also other prohibited uses that are not listed in this particular use that would be prohibited on this property.
That's right.
So, so, so C6 is primarily the downtown zoning district, so, so any uses that could normally go downtown would be allowed on this property with the exception of this, this list here.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. There again, C6 is quite intensive, I'll say that. Teresa, I may have a question of you on page five of 17 about personal services. What are, what would be involved in other personal services? And also when you're coming up, I believe it's going to be 90 or 120 feet in height?
Good afternoon. Teresa Miao with Community and Economic Development. I'll answer the easier one first. So it'll be 120 feet is the maximum height. And personal service uses, those are things typically barber shops, salons, day spas.
Those are kind of listed. If there's anything else out of the ordinary that you never can anticipate what might pop up, but.
That's correct. And that's why with both personal services and with the retail sales, there's a catch-all and it says all other personal service uses not specified indoors are permitted by right within C6. And that's to allow for those unknown uses. And given that all of these are occurring indoors and they tend to be low-impact uses, there's not a concern with broadening that to allow other personal service uses that aren't explicitly listed as either permitted or prohibited within C6.
Okay, thank you. There again, I've read through the lists extensively, so I'm fairly familiar with the zoning criteria for C6, seven throughout. I really don't have any opposition to this. The only thing I want to make sure that my fellow commissioners understand, if we vote to this, we're relinquishing all of our rights to other, we can deny anything, is it may be some traffic or some, any kind of other concessions they may want to make in reference to utility movements and stuff that they would be employing to make. But again, I know that people involved and I think they have the best city of Lakeland in heart, so I really don't have an issue with it. But I just wanted to make sure that we understand as a body that we're relinquishing our, for any say we have in what goes as other than C6 and I guess above C7 could be included as well.
Any other comments by commissioners? Appreciate that commentary. Commissioner Madden?
Thank you. Thank you so much to both sides of the effort, you know, to our city attorney and to those on the developer's side to be able to scramble over the weekend, to be able to just make sure, were able to hash through some of these items. I even talked to friends who I didn't even think paid attention to city government and all were like, why wouldn't you be able to have a daycare there? Why wouldn't you be able to, you know? So I do think it is interesting to find out how, you know, sometimes we come up with some of these requirements. So I did say on Friday that I was looking to lean a little bit on, you know, someone from, you know, Mr. Fear, someone representing the other side, just so I can hear in public, that they felt like it was a mutual concession and a mutually agreed-upon list. So I would invite him up to the microphone. And then a question to staff that might have more expertise in the radio transmission of number 13 and number 14. You know, certainly as the broadband chair, I would not want to preclude anything that will prevent deployment of 5G or the very best possible technology. You know, I'm sure that the developer would want that as well, but I wouldn't want to do something to short sight ourselves. You know, I know that the 5G is deployed on top of buildings and on top of towers and it has to have a 50, you know, every 50 feet kind of radius to make the contiguous cell structure, you know, to be able to deploy 5G. So I would not want to have that area because of something we didn't know prevent them from having that technology. So I don't know if someone in our IT department or, you know, anyone would have that information or maybe the developer feels fine and knows all about 5G deployment and, and those, the words and the verbiage used in number 13 and 14 seem to their satisfaction, but that does give me a little pause.
I'll, yeah, want to, because if you want, while, while you're coming up, I'll just state that the attorney for the developer that we're negotiating this with represents clients that are installing wireless facilities and that type of thing. So that's part of his practice and this was language that he had suggested. So if that helps any.
It also does not reference anything but height.
And I'm not sure, you know, what the line of sight. I know with some of the millimeter wave, you know, they do have to get higher because they can't have any interference. So, you know, I don't know what I don't know, but I did want to make sure someone knew.
Chris Fear with Gray Robinson represents Lake Wire Development. We have spent considerable amount of time discussing this and massaging it and we really appreciate the work that, the cooperation that city attorney Palmer Davis has given us. You know, any developer would like to just have a total clean piece of property with no regulations whatsoever. And we, but we recognize this is C6, it's going to, it's going to have to conform to the requirements of C6. And these additional prohibitions are acceptable. We've decided that these are not going to be prohibitive. They're not going to prohibit what a potential developer might use. This is, this is only 2.3 acres of a very large, large parcel of property. And so if that ever becomes a problem, we'll put it on the other property.
Okay.
You might make a comment too, Mr. Fear, with respect to your protection of your development company and why it's important to you as well in terms of the way that this is.
Oh, you're talking about why we want to have it out Oh, you're talking about why we want to have it out of existing contract? Or what do you mean?
Well, no, why, the quality of what you want to have.
Oh, yes, yes. But, you know, it might be better to have...
Okay. That might be, that might be good.
Well, I mean, the whole purpose of acquiring this property in the first place was to augment and to protect the park as well as the community, that particular community. So, it's every intention that this property will be developed to the highest possible class. We don't want to have a business there, or a big box, or, what's the term?
Mini warehouse.
Yeah, mini warehouses. We don't want, you know, that's not what we're going to put there.
Because it complements everything else that...
It is going to complement, and it's going to augment what's going on with Bonnet Springs Park.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. To be, let me make sure I understood what you just said a moment ago. Again, we're relinquishing our rights on the 2.3 acres, but we still have a say on the balance of the 23 acres?
No, that's not what I said. Well, what I said is that this is, this is only a part of, what Lake Wire Development is purchasing is about 2.3 acres from the city of Lakeland. This, the provision in the contract between the city of Lakeland and Lake Wire, only as far as the approval of development plans that we're asking to be taken out, only applies to the 2.3 acres.
Okay. Now, would you be opposed if we limited to this particular, on this particular...
Pardon?
Would you be opposed right now if we limited to...
Yes, yes. Why?
For the next time? You know that, you said you know this developer right here, you don't know the next developer.
All right, Senator, I'll let you finish your question. I apologize.
Okay. I was wondering, again, David had mentioned that he knows this developer, and a quality developer, et cetera. Again, if we make this a one-time, we pass it for this particular developer, if he doesn't close, and for some other reason we bring another one, he would come back and implement the same process in hopes of you, if we could find out a little more about this new developer, per se.
Okay, this, this has to do with the city of Lakeland selling this property to Lake Wire. Whoever the developer is, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Whoever the developer is will be subject to these prohibited uses. For instance, if we could close on this property with the city before we sell it to a developer, which, that will probably happen. It may happen concurrently, or it might happen before we close with a developer. So, these, and when, when we close, these will be restrictions that are put on the deed. They'll be in the deed, they'll be prohibited uses in the deed.
Thank you.
Okay, so it won't matter. Whoever the developer is will be subject to these.
It protects our same interests. Commissioner Walker.
In reference to what Mr. Fear is also alluding to, I think it's important that we know, the Lake Wire Development wants to make sure, I believe, and what we're hearing, that we have a particular development that comes about that would enhance and support the neighborhood. And I think it's important, because as I raised that question on Friday, there's work being done on that old Club Kathleen property. And of course, we have nothing as of yet to say what may go there, but there's some work being done, and I think we may want to make sure we keep our eye on whatever comes there, because we want to make sure it does, again, do what we're trying to do now to make sure it's of quality, to enhance the neighborhood there. And I hope you all can appreciate what I'm saying. All right? Thank you.
Any other questions by commissioners? Any by the audience at all? This is a roll call vote, is it not?
Voice.
No, it's not voice vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same?
Nay.
Passes with one objective. All right, that brings us to the util... No, that, that's it. I wasn't looking ahead, because the rest of the items, we've gotten done by consent. So, that brings us to the audience portion, for any audience comments of the meeting. Are there any public comments that someone wants to make? If so, please come up here to this podium right here, sir. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Terry Coney, and I've been in front of most of you before. Today, I'm actually here not so much for a comment, but just to introduce myself as the president of Lakeland Branch NACP, and also to a citywide nonpartisan organization, and I have membership applications for all of you. So, our organization goes back to 1909. On February 12th, we celebrated our 112th anniversary. The actual forming, the original planning for the organization started around 1905 with a group called Niagara Group. And then, that planning and organization began full force after a race riot in Springfield, Illinois in 1908. But, our mission is actually to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights, and to eliminate race-based discrimination in the health and the well-being of all persons. And I really want to focus on that last part, health and well-being of all persons. And I think that the commissioners here, I think you all look to improve the health and well-being of all persons in Lakeland. So, I think we can work toward that, we can collaborate, and I look forward to talking to each and every one of you about your vision for Lakeland. And I want to congratulate the city manager on his proposal on banning the box. I think that's a very big step toward helping all people that may have made a mistake or had a problem, but trying to turn their lives around. And sometimes, when they have to check that block, they have a big decision to make. But, when you take that away, whatever mistake they've made, somebody's giving them a clean slate to start over. So, congratulations on that, and I think that's, that's well-deserved. And finally, since this Black History Month, and my mother was a teacher for over 36 years, I used to ask her questions, "Help me with this, tell me about this, help me learn about this," and she'd always say, "Go look it up." But, now you all have this great device called Google, so, so I'm just going to ask you to Google the race riots of Springfield, Illinois for 1908, and then also the Wilmington, North Carolina insurrection of 1898. And that will be your self-taught lesson of Black history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coney. Appreciate it. Commissioner Madden has a question for you, sir.
No, I just wanted to thank you for coming. I had read your bio and was excited about your new opportunity to lead the organization here locally, so thank you for coming to introduce yourself. It might have taken us a while with COVID to make our way out to find you and to introduce ourselves, so, number one, thank you for coming. Secondly, I wanted to thank you for giving us your feedback on the ban the box. I know I've had conversations with our city manager, and he actually showed us the NACP video with regard to ban the box. It was really a powerful way to explain, you know, why you felt that it was going to have some of the effects that we are looking for it to have as we, you know, went into conversations with the community with Lift Lakeland. So, I just appreciate you coming and to introduce yourself, and to tell us, you know, that you appreciated the ban the box, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Salvage.
Yes, sir. Welcome, Terry. It's good to see you. Congratulations on your new position. I'd like to thank you for your service as a fellow retired lieutenant colonel, and welcome you to your post. You're going to have some challenges, but I know you're going to be up to it. Thank you again.
Thank you. And we're under the Zoom format now, but at any time, feel free to, we'd love to have you to just kind of come and talk about your vision for Lakeland. I think we all want the best for our city.
Thank you so much. Thanks very much. Yes, Mr. Salvage.
Hi, I am Kate Lake, Catherine Lake for the official record there, and I am the owner of My Office &amp; More in downtown. And I, anybody who knows me knows that accuracy is really, really important to me, particularly in these times where numbers and facts get thrown about, and all of a sudden, they get, become reality when they're not reality. So, this is why I'm concerned about a paragraph that is in the resolution that you passed, Resolution Number 21005, at the, I think it was the January 19th meeting. The 11th whereas clause says, "Whereas the positivity rate for COVID-19 has reached 15.76% in Polk County over the past 14 days, representing a positivity rate more than three times the rate of July 2020, reaching a peak of 18.3%, there are now an average of approximately 500 positive cases a day compared to 90 per day two months ago." I am not making a statement about the resolution at all. I am concerned about the data that is in there, because I am concerned it will now be used as a point of reference. For example, a Lakeland Now article on July 15th said the positive rates in July of 2020 were 12.2% and rising. The statement in the resolution says it's three times the rate of July. That wasn't the case. The positivity rate was 13.8%, not the 15.76% in this paragraph. The peak was 18.07%, not 18.3%. And at the time, the week before this resolution was adopted, the average number of cases were 451 cases a day, not 500. In two months prior, would have been November, the average number of cases was around 146 cases a day. In October, three months before, it was in the 90s. This has been such a matter of importance to me, that since last July, I have been keeping my own statistics from the state website. I learned by cooperating through the city staff, most recently, to try and understand where the data came from, that that number, those numbers that they issue on a daily basis, they change. So, even, they're not static, they're very fluid. So, when you go back a few days, the numbers change. So, that helped me understand why I have a hard time matching things up. But, these differences are so great. I'm, I'm hoping that there is a simple solution, and that is that the commission would just have that one paragraph stricken. Leave the resolution, I'm not saying anything about masks, I'm not saying my opinion about any of that. All I'm saying is, I am hoping there is a way that you can go back, strike just that one paragraph, so we don't have fake data sitting in a city resolution. And I really appreciate your service and your time for listening to me. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by the public? Any comments by commissioners? Yes, Commissioner McClellan.
Thank you, Mayor. And Friday, I had to hop off early, as Commissioner Madden was talking about her moving on from the CRA to Lift Lakeland, so I appreciate your comments, and just to say that I'm thrilled to join the CRA Advisory Board, and I, we all know there's a lot of exciting work that has been done and is being done under the CRA, so I look forward to stepping into that role. I have big shoes to fill. I think you've done a great job on that advisory board, and I'm excited to see you in the Lift Lakeland role and the things you're talking about, and you may have some updates on that as well. But, so, thank you, Mayor, and fellow colleagues for that opportunity.
We're looking forward to it, sir. You'll be great service there. Chris Reed.
Thank you. I believe that the CRA board really wasn't too active until Jim Moles came on board, if I remember correctly. And so, he kind of got things started, then Stephanie came on board.
I was a CRA board myself when I first came on.
Were you? Was it?
You all forget about my normal name.
Yes. Here it was, too. For a long time.
He was there, too.
I've got a hole, I better stop now. But, there again...
We're just old school, that's all.
It's, I hope everybody had a good Valentine's Day, and of course, today's President's Day, I understand, and of course, I think it's talking more of the clothes, I couldn't find anything on here today. But, you know, I'm excited about, we're coming forward with the, in the near future with the Sun of Fun, again, this is going to be a big event, and we're looking forward, and hopefully that will transpire this year, if we can keep everything under control. It's going to be a necessity for the airport and the academy out there. And really, that's all I really have to say. It's been a delight working with all of you guys, and glad to see us back in some facsimile of a meeting face-to-face. And that's about it, really.
Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. So, mine's quick. I know we have two days to talk to each other in the next two days, but I did want to mention, since, you know, I was the one who talked about the planes, and thankfully, you know, the man at the helm over there at the airport, Gene Conrad, understands that when we say something that, you know, "Don't shoot the messenger," we are the voice of things that we receive in our email boxes and phone calls that we receive from neighbors and friends. And so often, I feel like I'm so excited when I see matching T-shirts and crowds coming from their neighborhood and people emailing, and that is what we want. We want public discourse, we want public engagement, that is why we serve, is to be a voice of the people. I think sometimes, it comes down to a vote, yes or no, and it feels like either a loss or a win, depending on what side you were on the issue. And I hope that residents, over time, will instead see that, just like a marriage, just like a family, just like a parent and child, you know, there's compromises that have to come on both sides. The glory of this body is that we're nonpartisan, that we put that aside, and we talk to each other, and we weigh things, and we consider things, and we talk to staff, and we go back and forth. And just like, you know, the recent Carol on Lakes, it might not have been everything that they wanted, but there were a lot of concessions that were made throughout that process. Specifically, as those emails would come in, staff was able to address one at a time and make a difference, and hopefully come up with a win-win and a better product in the end. And so, it's the same with the airport. You know, we go forward, we're going to have more planes, and we're going to have more plane noise, and we're trying to mitigate that the best we can. Certainly, there's an avocation restriction or easement in those neighborhoods that are directly affected by the airport in really close proximity, but with the new flights and landing and departure, it's been louder for some of the neighbors who are not, you know, not as prone to expect plane noise. So, I was able to send videos from folks who sent me videos from their houses, and emails and phone calls, and I had a meeting with Gene Conrad for over an hour, and he was able to say that because of that, also thank you to Lakeland Now and to the Ledger, who gave it some traction and did some of their own reporting and journalism about the issue. And I think all of those things show that, no, it might not stop planes, I don't think that's our goal. You know, I personally hope we have commercial air, you know, so we don't have to go to Tampa, Orlando. Other people could differ. But, ultimately, as we hear from residents, then, you know, it gets the ball rolling, it gets traction. Gene Conrad's talking to our district FAA representative, they're talking about alternative landing, like maybe coming in right over the parkway, and maybe that will mitigate some of the noise. We're talking about, you know, the different ceilings at which you can fly and land and depart. Even, you know, I learned that in the winter, you know, that those planes are louder than in the summer, just based on wind direction and things like that. So, it was very informative. He is listening, he said that's the thing that keeps him up at night, is, you know, with growth comes growing pains, and he doesn't want it to be a negative for our neighbors throughout Lakeland. If you would like to hear more from Gene Conrad, he has said that he would speak to HOA, or to a group of neighbors, or that they could come out to the airport and see the map, and see kind of the growth, and then also the future vision for the airport. But, I just thought it was really educational, and like, I just want to use this moment to say, I know sometimes, you know, it doesn't seem like your civic action matters, but it does. I look to my colleagues, and I know that they are reading all of those emails, whether they can respond in a timely fashion or not, and I really believe that we have a great group who reads those emails, processes the information, you know, does their own research of visiting neighbors, and listening to staff, and going back and forth, and hopefully, you know, we are all, you know, coming to a better product, a better Lakeland because of all the voices. So, just want to say that.
Excellent. Concur 100%. Commissioner Salvage.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of the airport, I have another opportunity to recognize one of the unsung heroes of the staff who's retiring, Teresa Cornet, who was the airport property manager, retired a couple of weeks ago after 24 years. And you talk to Teresa, you'll discover that things weren't always so... And you talk to Teresa, you'll discover that things weren't always so hunky-dory out at the airport. There were times when we had fiscal problems, leadership issues, tenant problems, and she's lived all through that. And she was one of Gene's major assistants in making the airport what it is today. So I want to wish Teresa and Lee the best in her retirement. I do want to add on to Terry Coney's comment about ban the box. Ban the box has been a HR best practice for some time. About 15 states who've got it statewide, ban the box, and countless numbers of municipalities and organizations. And it's based on a simple fairness approach. If you're an HR manager and you're looking through 50 resumes, applicants, you are looking for ways to delete as many as you can. And if you have on that application, have you ever been convicted of a felony? And you put yes, nearly every HR manager will throw that one aside. So what this does not mean, and Sean needs, and Mark Farrington need to be appreciated for this, does not mean that we lessen our due diligence. Before we hire somebody, we'll still do the same investigation of their past, but they get in the front door. Let me give you an example. I have a friend who, in her 20s, as many are want to do, made a terrible mistake. She was convicted of possession of cocaine, felony. She has lived an extraordinary life since those days in the 1980s, but that still is right there on any application she has to put in there. So it is a, it is a way to at least give people a shot at saying, "Look, I made a mistake back in 1985. I was convicted of it. I've served my time, but I want to tell you what I've done since." And so Sean, congratulations to you and Mr. Farrington for doing that. And finally, I want to talk about an article in the Ledger that came out Thursday, a wonderful article by Kimberly Moore, that talks about the loss of Coach Paul Green in Auburndale. If you read the article, Green was an exceptional athlete out of Auburn High School, that played college football, and then served his life serving Auburndale as a coach and a teacher. Well, he died of COVID-19 after a three-week battle at age 66. A man, exceptional athlete, still in good shape, active, and COVID killed him in three weeks. Couldn't breathe, put a ventilator on him, and we lost him. So I talked to his daughter this morning to ask her if I could say this, because she had a comment in the article that's worth repeating. She talks about people who don't wear masks, and she doesn't condemn them, she doesn't blame them, but she talks about love of your fellow man, respecting somebody that you don't know. And what she's asking for is, please wear the mask, you know? And that's all that it boils down to. Kate's comments about, well, the statistics might be wrong, I agree. But I'm saying that wearing the mask, we're almost through this. I'm optimistic that vaccinations are now going on, that we're, although there's a mutant that could be very dangerous, so we're not out of the woods yet. So I encourage everybody listening to just put on a mask. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight, we had a great workshop today on transportation with Mr. Chuck Barnby and the Undersecretary for District One of Florida DOT, Nandem, and then also Tom Phillips from our Citrus Connection locally in Lakeland Area Mass Transit. But as the Lakeland Area Mass Transit Chair, I haven't, I haven't reported in on this too much. The mayor and Commissioner Walker, the three of us serve on that board and have served on that board for the last couple of years. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, and I'll do this once a month, that what has been going on at Citrus Connection. So to speak a little bit on the masks, so over, since COVID started, Citrus Connection has given out between 80,000 and 100,000 masks per county funding, so that people who get on the bus can wear a mask, and now there is a federal mandate for public transportation to have masks. And so that's something that they've been doing continually since last March, and it's just something that doesn't really get highlighted in the news, but that is a huge undertaking and a good provision, I think, for our community of people who use public transit. I also just wanted to highlight Ms. Lyndon McAlpin. Is it McAlpin or McAlpine?
McAlpin.
McAlpin. She served Citrus Connection for 34 years and is retiring, and we just saw a fantastic video about her and are going to be able to hopefully meet her once COVID has subsided a little bit and thank her for her years of service. She actually was instrumental early on, and I'm looking at Commissioner Madden and working with the Junior League to get a stop on Lake Hollingsworth, so that people could come from all over. And she was sort of a pioneer in working with Citrus Connection. She started as kind of a clerk and then moved up to an operator and then became a trainer. I'm looking at Commissioner Walker because he knows her personally. But we just want to say congratulations to her on her retirement. She has served this community extraordinarily well over the last 34 years. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to give kudos to a couple of our particular departments, especially so when it comes to, as we've heard today with communications, and given their report as they did. So many things have happened because of COVID and how we went through the year 2020. And you think about it, look back, and thought, wow, we made it, and how do we do these things? But even just of late, with having to put something together for Black History Month recognition and not having the actual festival that we normally have, excuse me, at Jackson Park, the Coleman Bush Building property. And here we are, now got the actual Discovery Trail that we asked all of our citizens and we look at, you know, we've got about two weeks left in this month, as we celebrate this particular time of year each year, to discover or even get to know some things that many of us don't know about those of us, especially when it comes to that particular ethnicity, have played, a blaze, I call, trailblazers and help make Lakeland what it is today. I think even more so, once we get the Lakeland History and Cultural Center open up, there's going to be even more information to be shared about not only one ethnicity being African-American, but others as well, on what they've done and how well, you know, they've been, not things not known about, how well, you know, it has helped to make Lakeland what it is today. Affordable housing. I don't know where we're even aware that there's a couple of new properties out of the ground. I know the mayor was there with one this past Thursday with Swale Lake Village over on Griffin Road, but even the new one that's there off Providence Road, which is part of Providence Reserve, is a new name because they want to identify, have it identified a little different from what Providence Reserve is, and it's dedicated for seniors. But of course, it's for, again, affordable housing because it has the Medicare Income Guideline to even get up in that particular apartment complex. Very nice. If you haven't been by there, I suggest you go by. And then, of course, we've got Twin Lakes is open now over off Lake Beulah, so Phase Two of that is opening up, and they're taking, people have been occupying those particular apartments even right now over there. So kudos to all that. And lastly, I think we're hearing about Sunday Fun, but you know, the Tigers will come back to Lakeland, y'all. So kudos to Bob Donahue and his staff and working with the Tigers team to make sure that we have spring training, even though it's going to be limited as to what things that can or cannot be done, but still, we're going to have people getting, being able to get out and enjoy, you know, some baseball here in Lakeland with the Tigers coming back here very soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll end by talking about the fact that we're going to take that Discovery Trail as a family together and do that, and I'm taking my son and daughter-in-law as well, who live here, just because it gives us an opportunity to be able to know more about it. It's not exhaustive. It doesn't include everything that can, could be in there, but it is what has been able to point to people that lived and raised in Lakeland early on and had a great impact on the city. And that's the kind of thing we can do more of, and it's wonderful to have the Cultural Center to do that. We had someone stay with us this weekend that works with a commission closely in another large city in Florida, and I was listening to the stories of the strife and fighting that they contend with all the time, and I thought to myself, we are so blessed here because this is a commission that thoughtfully works to yes, to do what matters in a nimble way. And we're going into strategic planning for the next few days, and we'll get to talk about that as we go forward. But I don't think, I don't want to take for granted for one minute the tone and the concern and the absence of financial motivation that so often people in this process get sidetracked by, and rather that we work for quality of life. And so I just want to end the meeting by saying thank you because it's a blessing to be able to work with not only you, but a wonderful staff who reflects the same kinds of values. This is an unusual city, and we want to just not take it for granted at all and appreciate the great demeanor and the opportunity to share and to respectfully listen to each other's ideas and our citizens all along the way and respond so respectfully as you all do. So thank you very, very much, just from the bottom of my heart, for the privilege of being able to serve with you. I'll take, he's crying. Bill's crying. Is there a motion to adjourn? In a second. All those in favor, signal pop by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.